Call this Board of Supervisory Meeting of September 20th, 2021 to order. We all please rise for the invocation and pledge allegiance. Heavenly Father, we ask- I got replaced. It's all yours.
Father God, we thank you for the beautiful day you've given us today. Thank you for this great land that we get to be a part of. Thank you for our great state and Mojave County. Lord, we pray for these Board of Supervisors as they deliberate today. We pray for wisdom. We pray for a sense of great direction, Lord. We thank you that you have given us this land in which to live, where we can look to you as the author and finisher of our lives and faith. We pray now your blessing in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Need a motion for an executive session to be held October 4th, 2021 at 9:00 a.m.
So moved.
Motion second for the discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Committee of your legislative records. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the Crisco meeting this week in Lake Havasu City in person. So, we're able to see a lot of the members live and see their faces and whatnot. Some people were online. We adopted a budget for that. And we also got a presentation from Bullhead City's biologist that works on their pest control district, talking about caddisflies, which is a big problem along the Bullhead City area along the Colorado River. So, that was actually pretty interesting. So, I enjoyed that. That's all. Thank you.
Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the Board of Health meeting, also the town hall held in Dolan Springs featuring our sheriff. I also attended the CSA Executive Board Committee meeting, part of the Medium County Caucus, and of course, the CSA Board of Directors.
Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. I too attended the CSA Board Directors meeting. And we were talking about the issues that are going to be brought up in front of us at our summit at the end of the month. So, when that happens, I will come back and report what they voted to support.
Supervisor Lingefeld.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Last week, I did attend a broadband meeting up in Colorado City. It was well-attended. Had Representatives Jeff Sabatka from the Arizona Commerce Authority, the IT guru with them. Arizona Governor's Office also had a representative there, as well as several regional and local stakeholders. It was a good meeting to have in pursuit of improving broadband service across the northern part of our county. Tomorrow, the next meeting of the Mojave County West Basin Water User Study Committee will be held at 1:00 p.m. at the Arizona Senate. I'll be attending as one of the members of that committee. And Mojave County continues to work closely on progressing the Wallapai Tribe's proposed water settlement. Myself, along with manager elders and staff, have been working closely with ADWR, the Wallapai Tribe, and congressional representatives in pursuit of possible federal legislation being introduced by the end of the calendar year. We certainly hope so. We hope to bring finality to that very soon. That's all I have today, I think.
County Manager reports.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board members. I have one item, and it relates to vacancies in county employment. I have been keeping you up in the loop. We continue to experience higher number than usual and higher than we hoped for. We currently have a little over 100 vacancies in various county departments and a little over 30 in the court system. In the court system, as I said, a little over 30 in the various county departments, just about across the board, but primarily the Assessor Development Services, Public Health, Public Works, and the Sheriff's Department, including probation. We, in an effort to mitigate the problem and help ourselves, we held a county job fair at the end of August. We attracted a little over 130 people, and that generated 100 applications. Just about every department participated and had someone present. We had computers on hand to help folks who are interested in filling out applications. We did receive 100 applications as a result of that event. We have hired two people so far. So, it's, you know, it's work in progress. I will do my best to update you at future board meetings on how many additional people we have hired. But it's, we're not unique, and we understand that. But it is, it's an ongoing effort. And the only other item that I have to share with you this morning has to do with COVID and COVID cases and the impact. Since the beginning of this FY '22 fiscal year, which is July 1st, we've had about 55 encounters, close contacts, and so on. Of those, we have had 23 employees test positive for COVID and have had to stay home and quarantine. We've had others that were close contact, but did not test positive. So, overall, thank you. You extended the advanced PTO for employees. That has been really helpful. Again, since you extended it, we have had five employees who came down with it or were close contact, needed to stay home, did not have PTO, and were able to apply for the advanced PTO that you approved. So, thank you for facilitating our ability to support our employees and work with them. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Call to the public. Jennifer Esposito.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito Kingman. Actually, you haven't had any employees test positive for COVID because the test doesn't test for COVID. We've been over that. I'd like to address a false statement made by the woman with the oxygen tank at the last meeting. She said that the Pfizer vaccine was fully approved. That is patently false, and anyone who says that is either lying or grossly misinformed. The only vaccine that was fully approved is the Comirnaty vaccine, which is not available in the United States. Now, recent VAERS data has come out, and it has shown that 70 people every day, on average, are dying from the COVID vaccines. Now, a Harvard study a while back determined that only 1% to 10% of adverse effects and deaths reported to VAERS, and there are healthcare professionals all over the internet going public stating that their facility where they work is telling them not to report to VAERS. So, our best guess is that at least 700 to 7,000 people every day are dying from this experimental gene therapy. So, my question to this board is, how many people are you really comfortable having the county facilitate harming and killing? All right? Why don't you leave that to the professional killers at places like KRM C? All right? Here's the deal. The Salk Institute, very pro-vax, published a study. This was a couple of months ago. And the study showed conclusively that the spike protein without the virus, just the spike protein alone, was toxic. That's what's in the vaccine. You know who conducted the study? If you look at it on the Salk Institute website, it was our government and a bunch of Chinese people. We knew it was toxic. And yet, this board continues to fund expanding the Health Department. I shouldn't have to come here and get up early and tell you these things. The retard you have running the Health Department should be telling you these things. This isn't conspiracy theory stuff. This is verifiable fact. All right? You guys have a responsibility. As Chris Riddaretti pointed out at the last meeting, there's a statute, okay, that gives the Health Director very frightening powers. Now, you as the employer and as the board, direct policy. It is the policy, the job of staff, that guy over there, to implement the policy that you set. So, I'm strongly recommending that you take the power that you have and set policy for what the Health Department here does and does not do before they get you in another lawsuit like the one they did with Blondie's Restaurant. Thank you.
My name is Arthur Garnica, living Kingman. I'm coming to you, like several months ago, I brought, or I told you about Board members illegally using the attorney and the insurance money to pay their attorney fees. So, I brought you guys this documentation right here to show proof that Jim Beatty and John Bryant are misusing the public monies. And I'm just asking if you guys could look into it and maybe investigate, help someone investigate this because it's been going on for a long time. My case in there, their attorney blatantly says that she knew she was not really legally representing them, but it didn't affect me, but no, it affects the whole community. Now, they got another case going, and they're using the insurance to pay the bill when they were served individually by me and the other person that's suing them now. So, I think if they're using their own money, they wouldn't do the things they're doing. But as long as they're going to be using our money, the taxpayers' money, they're going to keep doing illegal stuff because they can get away with it because they're using our money to pay for the attorneys. And I don't think it's right because that's like me paying double. I gotta pay to take them to court because I'm a taxpayer. So, I'm paying for them to take, to go to court against me. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Christopher Darty.
Christopher Darty, Kingman. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America. If our country was being formed in 2021, here's how the preamble to that Constitution would read. "We, the bureaucrats, federal, state, and local, the government agencies, including but not unlimited to the CDC, the FDA, the FBI, the EPA, the TSA, the deletest DC royalty, not include, not, sorry, including but not limited to Joe Biden, Harris, Pelosi, Schumer, and McConnell, in order to form a more imperfect and divided state according to race, gender, political preference, religion, and Wuhan vaccination status, establish and unjust equity-driven outcome-based court system, ensure domestic chaos, turbulence, and violence with the aid of Antifa, BLM, and the FBI, provide for the common capitulation and betrayal of Americans both on foreign soil and domestically, promote and expand vast unsustainable taxpayer-funded welfare programs in order to enslave the people and destroy any remaining trace of liberty and freedom to those and the posterity of those who refuse compliance, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the disconnected, borderless, chaotic states of Communist America with a K, grabbing and spending another $2 million of the American Rescue Plan Act bribe cash is an excellent way to comply and salute this new dystopian Constitution." Congratulations, Mojave County, and welcome to the Communist States of America.
We have a proclamation declaring September 2021 as Workforce Development Month. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a second. Have a motion second for the discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll have a presentation, Arizona At Work video.
Good morning, Chairman Johnson, Board of Supervisors. Today, I'm going to come to, I'm coming before you to present the Arizona At Work video. This video is a video that helps people in the community understand exactly what services we provide here at Community Services Department. I'm also joined by Chairman Joe Thornberry, who also was a major lead in this video programming as well. So, at this time, I would like to present the video to you as well. Thank you.
Arizona At Work serves job seekers of all backgrounds, all skill levels, and all ages. Here is our story.
Hello, my name is Joe Thornberry. I'm the chairman of the Mojave-Lapaz Workforce Development Board. We are Arizona At Work. Using core partners and community partners, we provide an umbrella of services to employers and employees. Please watch some of our stories.
I help businesses get their workforce needs fulfilled by helping them find job seekers and set up hiring events.
My name's Krista Knott. I'm the CEO for the Gardens Rehab and Care Center. We're always looking for certified nursing assistants. When I connected with Arizona At Work, we talked about the opportunity about bringing individuals from the community that are working with Arizona At Work into our facilities and providing a program to where we're assisting those in the community with starting their career, some advancement opportunities with the assistance of Arizona At Work.
They helped me a lot with as far as when I first started off as a CNA. They helped out with uniforming and helping me study to pass my CNA to get the license. If you're going to do it, don't psych yourself out. Really don't. Don't procrastinate on it because I feel like the longer I took out on it, the more I missed out on it because I could feel like I could have been, started my career by now.
I think our biggest benefit has been the gaining employees with nothing lost. We, no cost to us, no, they help with the training, they provide them with the tools. They, you know, we're not happened to provide any of that stuff, and that has been huge for us.
They helped me get my GED. They helped me study for it, paid for my classes and stuff for the test. I was able to get my GED. That was probably the coolest part. They provided me with everything. They provided me with tools, with my bags, anything that I needed. And yeah, they provided all of it.
And identify what are the priority workforce needs that those employers have in manufacturing, construction, healthcare, information technology, transportation, business, and finance. What are the priority needs that our communities have to support economic development, community growth, and help individuals gain the knowledge, skills, competencies they need to start a career and advance in their career, to sustain their families, and to live and grow and be happy and have a quality life here in Mojave County? We all know that when we ask any employer what is one of their largest challenges that they face in sustaining and growing their businesses, it leads to a quality workforce.
Vocational rehabilitation is a state-run program that's funded by the federal government. We take people with disabilities, whether it's mental or physical, and we assist them in getting off of social services and instead get back to work. So, by helping them overcome their barriers, they can get gainful employment.
So, you ask, who is eligible for our services? If you're a business within Mojave County or Lapaz County, you automatically qualify for our no-charge services through our Business Service Department. You can get help retaining current employees or help recruiting new employees. If you're an employee looking for work, we can help you with the basics like GED, certification to retain a job or gain a new job, or if you just need help with job search and resume, we are here to help. Arizona At Work is making our workforce stronger in the community.
The story of Arizona At Work is never finished. This is a journey. We are on it with you every step of the way.
So, I also wanted to share, Chairman Johnson, members of the board, I also wanted to share with you, this is our annual wage impact. So, last year, $7.5 million came back to the community. Those were people that came to Workforce Arizona and received training, skills, or were provided resources to continue their education or to find information as it relates to the jobs they were looking to attain. And with that, I'll conclude unless there's any questions.
Supervisor Angus.
Hi, thank you. That was a, that was a very well-produced video. Who is the audience for this? Where, who's going to see this other than us?
Sure, that's a great question, Supervisor Angus. So, in regards to this, this will actually go on our webpage. So, when people are actually going to the CSD, they'll see that so they, they can understand what it is actually Workforce Arizona does in a synopsis really short and sweet for 3.5 minutes, as well as we'll be working with local businesses. Because one of the things we'd really like to see is that, make sure that local businesses understand that we're here to support their needs. Arizona At Work Force Board is really to drive our funds, so the board members on the board are to drive strategic funds to businesses to support the local workforce development.
Are the Chambers of Commerce involved in this?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Supervisor Lingefeld.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Michael. KAMA obviously had their hand in this as well, is that correct?
So, in regards to the video, not directly, but when you think of KAMA as well as the Chambers, we do have subcommittees, and our, our team does attend all of the KAMA meetings as well as the Chamber meetings.
Great. Well, I know that we're certainly blessed to have the Kingman and Mojave Manufacturing Association here. If you didn't know, Mojave County is home, out of the Kingman Airport, to the largest industrial concentration outside of the metro Phoenix area. And it's something to be proud of. So, this is a great, a great video. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move to the consent, items five through 35. Supervisor Angus.
Nothing this morning.
Supervisor Bishop.
I'm good, thank you.
Supervisor Gould.
Number 31, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Lingefeld.
Nothing this morning, Mr. Chairman.
I need a motion to approve items five through 35 minus-
So moved.
Have a second? Have a motion second for the discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 31, Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious, if Allen is in the audience? There he is. I'm curious whether there's any changes in these precincts. Are these the same precinct lines that we've had for the last several years? It was also found out that I truly do live in a rural precinct because the boundaries of my precinct are defined by various Jeep trails and the railroad.
And they are absolutely, thank you Supervisor Gould, Chairman Johnson. They are the same ones that we developed back in 2015 after the 2010 census kind of in technology drove us that way. So, they are the same precincts. They've worked very well in the past, and I'm proposing that we continue to do so. We went from 73 at one time, trimmed down to 24, you know, precincts. That doesn't mean voting locations. That means precincts with political entities that have, share common interests. So, it's worked out really well since that particular time, and that's what I'm proposing to do right at this time and to, unless redistricting throws us a little bit of a monkey wrench, so to speak.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 31 be adopted.
Second.
Have a motion second for the discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 33. All right. Move to item number 38. One question ahead of time. Attorney Aspen, do we need to do item 43 before we do this?
I don't think so. The other item, let me just scroll down to there. Item 43, that is just, that's required by law. The proponents of the new district, they also have to change the district boundaries. And so, in order to do that, they had to file a petition with Northern Arizona Fire District. Then Northern Arizona sends it to us, sends us notice, and then the chairman has to order a review of the proposed change. So, it can happen right, the, the board can take up that item right after we take up item 38.
Any other questions?
Do you want me to explain item 38 at this time? I can do that before the public, before the public hearing?
Sure.
Okay. So, what we have today, let me grab my folder, hold on. So, individuals in favor of a new, creation of a new district have filed a district impact statement. The county, the clerk of the, clerk of the board has provided notice as required by law. And so, today is the public hearing. The board will hear the public hearing. They'll hear those who are for and against the creation of the new district. And then, the board has to decide this. The board has to decide whether the creation of the district will promote public health, comfort, convenience, necessity, or welfare. If the board believes that that is the case, if they vote in favor of it, then the board will authorize the, they will authorize the circulation of petitions. Those petitions will be circulated, and they have one year from the date that the, that the board approves it. They have one year to get the number of signatures. We believe we have the number of signatures. We have to make that calculation 15 days after the board authorizes it. And we've already kind of done those numbers, and it looks like they're, and, and don't hold me to this, we're just still finalizing it, but it looks like they're going to need about 2,881 signatures. And then, also, they need to have one half of the assessed valued property, and that would be, that would be about 6,432,421 in assessed valuation that they would need to get in order to create a new district. If the board says no, the, it will not promote, the, the creation of the district will not promote public health, comfort, convenience, necessity, or welfare, then it ends right here, and then the, the petitions will not be circulated. So, really, it's a yes or no. From the county attorney's perspective, we don't weigh in on this. We're not for or against it. We're, we stay neutral on this. We're representing the county and the concerns we have from the- We're representing the county and the concerns we have from the county, we just have one concern. The main concern is the creation of a district that already exists. What the board should be aware is there already is a fire district that exists, it's right there and it's in that area. And so what the proponents are trying to do is they're trying to, they're trying to modify the boundary change, so basically withdraw from the district, but at the same time also create one. I don't see anything in the statutes that prohibit that, but there's a risk. The risk is, what if you create a new district, but you don't withdraw? And if that's the case, then you have two districts in the same location, and that one we do not want. That is not something that would promote the public health, safety, welfare of the people, that would, it would cause confusion and problems and all kinds of things. And so really, if the board wants to, wants to accept the district impact statement and authorize the circulation of petitions, you really need to know if they're going to change the boundaries with Northern Arizona Fire District. They have also petitioned to change the boundaries there, that is ongoing, but the problem is they have not made a decision yet in the Northern Arizona Fire District. They are scheduled for a public hearing, excuse me, they're scheduled to make that decision on October 4th is when they will make that decision. So, so here's the thing, if they say yes, they can modify it, and if this board says yes, you can create, then they can do it at the same time. And then if they achieve their goal at the same time, then we don't have a problem. But it would be a problem if they do not modify the boundaries, and then this goes forward and they create a new district, then you would have two districts and that would be a problem. So that's the main concern that we have, otherwise, we take no position on this.
Any questions?
Supervisor Lingefeld. I think Supervisor Gould, you were first.
Ryan, so who modifies the boundaries of the district, then? Is it the existing board of the existing district?
Exactly, that's correct. So there's two different statutes. One is for modification, that goes through the Northern Arizona Fire District Governing Board. Then there's the creation of the district, and that comes through the Board of Supervisors. Anytime you create a new district, you come through the Board of Supervisors.
So theoretically, they could not modify it, and then you'd have a double district?
And that's something we want to avoid, that's the concern that we have. And honestly, I don't think this, I don't think the legislature envisioned something like this. I think, I think usually it's something that's independent, you know, if somebody wants to modify the boundaries, they just do that and that's it. If somebody wants to create a new district, it's usually in an area where they don't have one, and so they create a new district. I think this is unusual, that you're trying to modify from an existing one and at the same time trying to create a new one. And it's just, it's a unique situation.
It is an interesting conundrum, and I believe that was an independent fire district that served this area before they were annexed into Northern Arizona, I believe.
Yeah, I think they were. I mean, I don't know the history as well, but I believe that they existed previously and then they annexed in with Northern Arizona. I guess it was Walopai at the time, somebody else would know the history better than we would.
Remember a war being fought over something similar to this?
Yeah, so they, they annexed together, became one, and now they want to split off.
Sure, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. So we do have, at least I, we received a letter from the fire chief of NACFED that said that they basically didn't have a problem with what these people were trying, this group was trying to do, but would that go to litigation?
I think it would. If, if, if we have two at the same time, if we have two districts that exist at the same time, then it would be. But if they modify it and then create a new district, I don't see the litigation, unless some other steps were missed. But, but I think you can modify and then create a new fire district. And if they go through the steps, then I don't, I don't see that there'd be a successful litigation against that. I don't know.
Well, this is, this is a secondary property taxing district, it has its own elected governing board. And I feel like this is something that we should let the voters decide and educate themselves on, and I've been really reluctant to have an opinion on this because I don't live within the boundaries of that fire district. And I think it should be something that is decided by the voters that live inside that fire district, that are actually being taxed for that service. But if it does go to litigation down the road, is there any, is there any liability for the county or an action that we take today?
Well, I think the county is doing their best and has been played it by the book and followed the rules. As long as we've been following what the statutes require, then I don't see that there any, any kind of successful litigation. Certainly, somebody could file litigation against us, but I don't think it would succeed. As long as we're following the steps, and thus far we have, and I think the board has done a good job, the clerk has done a good job of making sure all the steps are followed from our end. This is a legislative decision on your part, and really legislative decisions usually are not something that the courts want to second-guess. They shouldn't. It's not the purview of the courts. It's really, you have the discretion whether to say yes or to say no, and I think there's really a low risk of successful liability, or low risk of liability for that sake. The thing that I've got to emphasize is that I just wish that Northern Arizona Fire District could have made the decision before today. Because what if you say yes, but then they say no on October 4th? Then you're in a problem. Because we have authorized the circulation, but they haven't modified, they haven't started the modification process yet. So you can decide yes today, or you could decide no today. I think you also could say, well, let's continue this until after that October 4th meeting to see how the Northern Arizona Fire District decides to.
Managerial, I don't remember off the top of my head, when is our first meeting in October? What's the day?
It's October 4th.
October 4th, so. So they meet in the evening?
I think so, yeah. I think they're meeting in the evening, yeah.
Questions to be heard? Hearing none, we have some people that have signed up.
Hello, my name's Connie Olson. I live in Truxton, Arizona, 16364 Walopai Avenue. I've lived there 36 years. And I've been on the fire board there, well, I was, and part of the volunteer fire department for 25 years. And I was there when we joined into the big, the, I don't remember, the Northern Arizona whatever. And that benefited us because being so rural, we didn't have enough taxes or enough anything to get stuff done. So by being included, we got included in that. And my one concern is we had a grant to get a brand-new fire tender specifically for Truxton, nobody else but Truxton, because we do not have fire hydrants. And I do not, under any circumstance, want that truck moved because it was made for our town specifically because the closest fire hydrant was, was four miles away in Peach Springs, Arizona. And so that's my one big concern. I don't know why anybody's wanting to split it now, I don't know what's going on as far as all the politics or all the whatever. And so I'm for leaving it like it is because we're like the little adopted child, you know, we're small, and we're being helped by the bigger one, but yet we've also, we came in and helped in Kingman 10 years ago when they had that big fire at the, not Walgreens, but the other place that burned down. We came in and helped with that. And so we're probably not a big addition to them, but we are totally volunteer because obviously you're not going to pay somebody to be staffed out there. But we do benefit from being a part of the bigger group because then we can get the professionals to come train us, we get the professionals to test our equipment, stuff like that. So as far as me and the people that I've talked to in my town, we are for leaving it like it is, we do not want to split off. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Barb Boncoski, and I live in Valley Vista. I've only been there like a year, but what the fire department has done for us already out there is great. I mean, they're always there, they're fast to get to where they need to be. I would sure hate to have to, you know, split up what we have now. I just want the fire department to stay there and to stay the way that it is. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name's Lydia Rossler, and I live in Valley Vista. I would like to share that I think that what we would like, what I would like, is a little more, a little more support in that area. I know that there's been several instances where outside of our Valley Vista area have not been supported as well as we are in Valley Vista as far as medical care or, you know, like EMTs or, or the fire. And I'd just like to say that I'm, I'm in support of creating a new area, a new district, so that we can have, so we can have more support, I suppose. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman, members of the board. I'm going to start off with, I'm Pamela McKinney, I live in Valley Vista, I've been there six years and I own two properties. And I have read thoroughly through all the boundary change impact statement, the impact statements, the feasibility analysis and so forth for this. And I concur with the financing conclusions of boundary change and the impact statements. If we don't get approval from both you and the NFAD, and we're left hanging out there, what will keep NAFD from shutting down even now our Valley Vista station down the road because they can't afford it? I was at the meeting on September 16th and was told it costs $700,000 to keep Valley Vista Fire Station open. I am from a fire family, I was a fireman's wife, and I know that that, that was kind of, seemed over the top. Anyway, as it is now, the entire area of Valley Vista to Truxton has emergency services and medical services from only one fire station with one engine, two firefighters. No ambulance or paramedic squads. Ambulances have to come from Kingman. We had an incident where outside of the cattle guard on Painted Rock outside Valley Vista, a man needed medical attention. Because it's outside of NAFD, Valley Vista didn't go help the man, it took too long to get the ambulance from Kingman and he died. The NFAD's feasibility statement clearly states they have no intention or ability to reopen the now-closed fire stations at Antares, Valentine, or Truxton. So they sit there closed up, all we have is the little station at Valley Vista for everybody out there. Additionally, NFAD received a recommendation from Facet Consulting to sell those closed fire stations and all the equipment that had been paid for through tax dollars, land has been donated, people have actually built those fire stations with their own money, and now NFAD says, no, we want it. We're going to sell and we're going to take the money. And then they've been recommended to increase the property tax cap rate to the 325 per 100, which will yield them another $125,000 a year, and then whatever they glean from the sales of our fire stations out there. That would put a lid on ever giving life-saving emergency fire protection or medical attention at the homes or any accidents that happened on 66, anywhere past Valley Vista, an increase in taxes, a decrease in public safety. Does that mean I'm up?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning, supervisors. My name's John Cassi, I live up in Valley Vista. In one way or another, I've been a first responder since 1984. I think the first thing we have to understand is we want trust in our first responders and the governing board. I believe the current board of the Northern Arizona Fire District has two members on it right now that are in support of the new district. I think the problem with that is, is what are they doing, maybe doing, behind the scenes that makes Northern Arizona not look too good to people because they want to start their own district? Do I need, do we need improvement up there? Absolutely. But the way it's been going on with the politics and name-calling and everything else, there's been almost zero transparency in what's been going on up there. Do we need it done? Yes, we do need things done. When talking with the chief at the last meeting, he said that it's been open for a year for volunteers, and he has zero people that have wanted to apply. The group that wants the new district says they have lists of people that want to apply. How do you have one and not the other? We have people that want to apply, why aren't they applying to the new, to the current district, but they only want to apply to the new district? It seems like a bunch of politics to me is going on about that. One of the board members also said, if we create our new district and it fails, we might be on our own because the Northern Arizona Fire District may not bring us back in. So we may create a problem of a new district that fails, and then we have zero services. As far as medical, I believe probably 80 to 95% of the calls up in Valley Vista are medical-related. Of the two firefighters that we have, one of them is a paramedic, he can respond with the engine and get stuff done. The other issue I understand is the ambulances or service is AMR, which has a contract for the complete entire area. We'd have to go through AMR, not Northern Arizona Fire District, to have an ambulance put out there, and God knows what that would cost, just don't know. I do not support the formulation of the new district. I do support working with Northern Arizona Fire District. Maybe we can get volunteers just for Valley Vista. I talked to the chief, and he said, sure, let's sit down, let's talk, and let's see how we can get it done. But it seems there's a big split up there with the people that want it and the people that want to keep it the same. From my perception, the people that want to change the district or the people that have been there for a while, they're a little older, they don't work, they're retired. A lot of the people that want to keep it the same are workers. I work, my wife is working right near, can't be here, some other people that took days off to be here from work. So I don't know why the split, how the split, what's going on. I will just simply tell you, I do not support it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Judith Landells, I live in Valley Vista. My husband and I have lived there 10 years, in that time, there have been five house fires in the vicinity, four of the five were total losses. I feel if our fire district had been up and running, or if NFD had been running properly, these fires could have been put out in a timely manner. We also need some type of medical team that can be, can respond to a medical call in a matter of minutes anywhere in the area. Because of the distance from Kingman, the communities of Hackberry through Truxton don't have a chance of getting fire ambulance service in time to serve, to save a life, or a fire service to save a home. No matter whether NFD or the new fire district is put in place, they need to know where they're going before they leave the fire barn, not guess where they're going. And I know that happened for a fact. The man that did it told me so. If nothing more than use your GPS on your phone so you're not floundering around guessing where they're going. where they're going, it shouldn't take 40 miles, 45 minutes to reach anywhere in a 29-square-mile newly formed fire district. So whomever receives the nod to be our fire ambulance service, please take your job seriously and be proud of what you're doing. We don't need to lose any more lives or homes because of negligence. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Lydia. Anita. Anita.
Thank you. My name is Anita Rayalm and I live out in Mountain Vista Estates, which is just outside the cattle guard of Valley Vista. I was asked to come here and tell you my short story. My husband had medical problems and one night I called 911 and said, please send somebody right away. He's not right. He's got problems. He needs to go to the hospital now. We couldn't get him up off the floor, so I couldn't pick him up. 10 minutes, and they said, okay, we're going to send somebody, just stay put, they'll be there pretty soon. 10 minutes later, he stopped. His heart stopped, his breathing stopped, everything stopped. Called 911 again, hysterical. I need somebody, I need somebody right now. What am I supposed to do? So they talked us through going through CPR and they said, we've got people on the way. The Valley Vista Fire Station is very close. They had paramedics there that would respond all over the place. I've seen them. Nobody came. 30 minutes later, we're still doing CPR, rescue breathing and CPR on my husband who hasn't moved in that amount of time. 45 minutes later, the ambulance arrives. And by that time, it was too late. He was dead. And I was thinking that if somebody had arrived in that first 10 minutes, he might still be here. He may not, but he might still be here. And I was also told by a couple of people, if you want any kind of service, you have to drag yourself over the cattle guard into Valley Vista to get some kind of service. And I'm sorry, that's not right. That's all I have to say.
Donald Munn.
My name's Donald Munn. I live at 9545 North Concho Drive, Valley Vista. I've been there going on six years. I am for keeping NFAD. They've been helpful, respectful, and I'm not for the change. Thank you.
Nelson. Nelson, he's coming.
How y'all doing today? My name is Nelson Ariano. Everyone out here knows me as Jack Nelly. I own a restaurant in Val Vista. Only been here a year. I own Mike's Outpost up the street. And we have property here in Val Vista as well. We, as a community, have found out that this has been going on for about a year and a half behind our back. We haven't been able to ask, like, these 2,000 signatures, none of us are on it. It's all their friends that want to take over and do this political change and get this fire district going for them. No one is saying why it failed before because they did this before and then it failed. Okay? We were left with nothing. Luckily, you guys stepped up and stepped in and took over. Okay? You guys vote yes and let them do this? I fear for the safety and the welfare of these people that are senior citizens who can't be here, can't speak on their behalf, who haven't been able to get involved with this because they have not been transparent. They've been doing stuff at their houses, behind people's backs to get this. They've been lying, slandering. I could read you a nice post after our meeting the other day, if I could. We had our meeting with the NFAD. All of us were there. The very next day, this very same group posted this. "My experience at the first NFAD meeting tonight is one for the books. I was embarrassed for the opponents of the new fire district. They wasted precious time hurling lies and insults about the proponents, but their antics showed their true colors before the fire board and everyone in the audience. What a display of out-of-control emotionalism. I was verbally assaulted by an old man who pointed at me and screamed. I demanded he stop yelling at me. That made him yell more. I stood up and was calling him out. He yelled at me to sit down. What a chicken. I'm not afraid of anyone. Don't assault me ever. He's lucky I didn't call the police and file charges against him." We actually had a sheriff standing behind this man who just told the man, calm down. This is a meeting. I don't want to have anybody leave. They go on to say, Nelson Ariano, aka Jack Nelly, made several rude comments to me as well. He continually muttered insults. I will never step foot in his cafe again. His burnt pizzas and his commercial Stouffer's lasagna are awful anyway. He put it on record that he owns the outpost bar, the outpost bar. You can now put the puzzle together, folks. But someone in the audience knew he was a liar because they know the real owner of Mike's outpost. I had every right to ask questions at the fire board. Others were as well, when my property tax dollars pay for them and the fire stations and NFAD. But Nelly seemed to think that he was running the show, shouting back to other questions. My point is, we don't need politics. Please say no. We can't get this to pass.
Wendy Hollinger.
Thank you.
Wendy Hollinger. Mary Van Stockham. Yes. All right. Come on down, ma'am. Yeah, Barry's on deck.
Good morning, board. My name is Wendy Hollinger and I live at 7688 East Chukawala Drive in Valley Vista. So we're here today for this proposal. The number one thing they're missing out of this whole proposal, where is a budget or business, business plan per forma of how they're going to make this work? They're claiming grants. Grants, yeah, grants are great. Are grants definite? No. Are they guaranteed? No. Are they residual? No. So yeah, this might work for one, year one, year two. What about, what about the long term? With no plan of how they're going to make this work over long term is exactly how we're here from 2008, when they had to hand it over to another for lack of funding. Lack of funding, if you go to their own impact statement, from reference from page 21, section 5, subsection A, states NFAD will lose approximately $429,000 tax dollars from the proposed district. If you take that money, that's guaranteed funds. And reference from page 114 of their impact statement states that a three-person engine company and a two-person engine company will cost approximately $1.2 million. If you take the $429,000 away, that leaves us $771,000 in the red. That doesn't account for operations, maintenance, administration, volunteers, volunteers cost. Does not having enough money affect the public health, comfort, convenience, necessity and welfare? And then we come up here to page 19, section C. What does section C state? They want local control. What does D state? They want to control local dispatch. What is the cost in that? What is the training involved in that? There's nothing in their statement that says this. So really what they're, sorry, under the public welfare section on page 17, section 4, subsection B1, they state they're going to provide volunteer personal train CPR and AED. They have no list of volunteers. And they don't have the funds to provide the training. This proposal promotes local control, a financial disaster with the possibility of failing residents to no services. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Barry Van Stockham. Barry Van Stockham.
Good morning. I'm Barry Van Stockham. I live at 9639 North Stetson Drive in Valley Vista. We've been there 11 years. I'm one of the proponents of this project. We started it four years ago, three and a half years ago. I guess it was three and a half. When we gave the district up to Northern Arizona, we left them with about $145,000 worth of money. Three stations opened, all with engines in them. Antares was open, Valentine was open, and Truxton was open. Within three years, they closed Antares, Valentine and Truxton. The lady from Truxton is right. That engine is sitting up there. It's brand-new. It only has 5,000 miles on it. And 2,000 of that was getting it there from back east. We do have a bunch of volunteers, but they won't work for the Kingman chief. So they can put all the signs up. He sent a notice out a year ago that he did not want to use any more volunteers. But then he puts signs up, he wants volunteers. We've been at those meetings with them. We've had to discuss everything and we have a good plan. We can live within that budget that we've asked you to approve. You can't wait 18, 20 minutes for a fire truck to get there and have one sitting on the side of the road till the other one gets there. And that's what happened in a couple of the fires. They had one come up, sit there from Valley Vista. The other one didn't get there for 22 minutes. Then it pulled in first. Valley Vista pulled in second. The people that were standing out in the street waving at the fire truck down by the highway, the fire is right behind them. They didn't move till the other one got here. I don't know why people don't understand that, but I think the people that are opposing it, you know, we're looking at getting 2,800 signatures and $6 million worth of property value before we can go forward. We're just, the paperwork we have to do with you guys and with the fire district. I don't know if the fire district is going to say yes or no. The chief, the chief up there had written a letter to the board saying, get rid of those guys, we don't want them.
Thank you, sir. David Hunter.
Good morning. I'm Dave Hunter. I've lived in Valley Vista for 15 years now. I'm in favor of the annexation for several reasons. One, local control. Right now, everything is decided outside of it. It's not going to turn over in one year. It may take two or three to get where we want to go. But we need better, better service and better responsibility. Kingman and Valley Vista are two different organizations. Kingman average age is 42-years-old. The average age where we are is 61-years-old. Fires are important and taking care of that's very important, but also health issues in people who are older. It's unfortunate when someone dies because you can't drag them across the line. And I think the final decision, I would hope that you would approve it, the final decision is going to be, can we get the signatures and evaluations to make this happen? And that's going to be going door-to-door and that's going to take time. But I think we can do it and I think it's good for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Your name is Matt.
Good morning. My name is James Mack. I, right now, I live just one mile outside of Valley Vista at Mountain Vista Ranches. I've lived in Valley Vista for 42 years. I still have property in Valley Vista. With the help of Sam Standis for myself and a few other people, we put the Valley Vista Fire Department together in 1980 and 81. And we built both firehouses and got two fire trucks and fire apparatus and everything all put together. We never got a loan. The other thing I want to bring out is being that they need two fire trucks on the scene. Kingman Fire Department takes about 25 minutes to get out to Arizona West, about 30 minutes to Antares Point, 35 minutes to Hackberry, 40 minutes to Valentine and 45 minutes to Truxton. And being that, if the Valley Vista Fire Department is one unit, we can cut that time in less than half because we're right there. And everybody's concerned about the ages of people living out there. I mean, it's nothing to say that a 65, 70-year-old person couldn't volunteer their time to be in, in the fire station, so, to help with other things that are going on and that could be volunteer. There's, there's a lot of, you know, we need more public relations. The public relations that we have right now is very poor. I think I pretty much covered everything. And, you know, we, we used to have a whole lot better service out there before Chief Ricardi retired and the board retired. That's basically one of the biggest reasons why it was given over to Northern Arizona Fire Department, because they wanted to retire. And there wasn't really anybody else that was at the time really wanted to take it over. We weren't really told what was really happening at the time, so we didn't really know. Or I'm sure we would have took it over and went on from there. So the other thing too is we have people that know how to get grants and everything. So we're going to be able to not, not only get grants, but, I mean, we, we would have like $500,000 plus to get started on. If we got started, we started a fire department with nothing.
Thank you, sir. Connie Joy.
Hello. My name's Connie Joy. I live in Valley Vista. I've had my home out there 22 years and lived there 20. Jim Mack is right. Judy Landells is right. We need you guys to make sure we're getting protection, whether we have a reallocation or we keep what we've got. We were promised heaven when Northern Arizona Fire District took over. What they have done is cut down and cut down. I need to know why. We've always had good EMT service until recently. And that has nothing to do with this side of the room or that side of the room. It has to do with the district that's serving us now. These people are not transparent. These people are not transparent. They are concerned about their health and safety, as you should be. It's up to you to make sure as a governing board or our county that the things that you say that the fire district is going to do are being done. They are not always being done. They weren't before and they aren't now. We need someone to really get in there and dig and find out why we're not getting our services. We need someone to really get in there and dig and find out why we're not getting our services. I thank you for listening to me today. Thank you, guys on that side of the room, and you guys on that side of the room. I live between you, and it's my community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, I'll go to the next person. Nick Leonard?
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I'm a resident of Valley Vista for about seven years now. A few points. There's a lot of emotion on this issue. The truth of the matter is, we've been accused of making this political, or there's some profit motive. There's nothing. None of us are running for office for a damn thing, and there ain't a penny in this for anybody. And most of the people that are working on both sides of this issue are doing it out of the goodness of their heart, and they're trying to make the situation better. The fact of the matter is, we're not served very well in Valley Vista. Truxton's not served. None of them are served. There's three closed fire stations out there with equipment sitting in them and nothing going on. That happened from the Northern Arizona Fire District when they took it over. It's up to you whether you decide to give us a chance to see if we can serve ourselves better. Give us a chance to use our tax dollars to better serve our people. We don't ask for anything more than that. We don't want anything out of this. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Cardi? Julie Champlain?
My name is Julie Champlain, and my husband and I have had a presence in Valley Vista for 30 years. I am in favor of redistricting the Valley Vista, Truxton, Hackberry Fire Department. We began this work in 2018 and have followed all the guidelines and protocols assigned to us. NAFED, however, has violated the statutes requiring them to send mail notice of a public hearing as required. As required. And they admitted to this at their board meeting Thursday, September 16th. Their professionalism and integrity as elected officials is in question for the very fact that they did not follow their own direction as outlined by their own attorney and never had the common courtesy to call and discuss the matter. This process could have been completed in 2020, but we lost that year to COVID restrictions. Daily, we hear from residents in the outlined areas of the proposed fire district that they are in favor of redistricting and improving their services. Many are unable to attend meetings such as this public hearing. We are asking that this process be allowed to move forward to the petitioning process so that these voices can be heard. Whether yes or no, please allow this issue to be decided by the will of the people and those affected by it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Nancy Moscow?
Good morning. My name is Nancy Moscow. I live in Valley Vista. I had a situation in January of this year where my husband called 911 because I had collapsed in my bathroom with COVID-19. The EMT was there promptly, and I was taken by ambulance to the hospital. The emergency health services, I have no complaint with. It's a horror of thinking that my home might catch fire and my husband and I could not get out. Waiting 20 to 30 minutes for a fire unit to be dispatched from Kingman is unacceptable. That, in my opinion, is the concern of residents who are in favor of the boundary change and formation of the fire district. Peace of mind means everything to senior citizens. NAFED's feasibility analysis without a doubt shows that they have no intentions in reopening the stations at Antares Road, Hackberry, and Truxton. Our proposed fire district would reopen those stations and give the property owners the comfort level that they deserve. About a year ago, some new residents moved into our community and opened a new business, which we were all excited about. These business owners, in my opinion, are the agitators of this issue. They have been invited to a meeting to talk about the proposed fire district, but refused to come. They were asked if we could post a town hall meeting announcement on their business door, and they refused. They have been on social media and have called our committee members despicable names. It has been said that the committee has not been transparent. That's not true. Our publication of meetings have been emailed through the association. They've been published in our monthly newsletter and had postings on all mailbox stacks throughout the community. At our town hall meeting, unfortunately, residents were turned away due to occupancy issues. There's a website where anyone can go to review the documents, including the 136-page impact statement. It's not a transparency issue. It's a few individuals who don't know what Valley Vista is all about, and they're dividing our community. So please give us back our fire district with the boundary changes. Thank you.
Couldn't hear you, sir. Can you repeat the name, please? We'll move on to Fred Heimy?
My name is Fred Heimy. I lived in Valley Vista for 10 years. These are good people. They're neighbors. And this issue has caused a lot of problems out there. Why fix a tire when it doesn't need to be fixed? This place has been working good. You guys are doing a wonderful job, by the way. I haven't heard anybody say that. I think you're doing great. These folks and anybody bickering over this is ridiculous. We have a fire station out there. I died, and they revived me. They saved my life two years ago. I have no complaint. The only thing I got to complain about is everybody fighting here. We have to live together. And you folks can help us. We really need some help. Mrs. Bishop, you're a wonderful person. Your husband was a great friend of mine. You folks, all of you, stand up for us, please. I want to see our fire station stay there. These people might have a good idea, but they're going about it wrong. This bickering between one another doesn't get anybody anywhere. Let's get this together and get us a fire station out there where everybody down the road can work with it. Thank you, Sil.
Thank you, sir.
When you call and you're clapping, we can't hear who you're saying.
Pardon?
When you call a name while we're clapping, we can't hear who you said.
This is not a clapping meeting. This is a board supervisor's meeting. So if you want to hear the names, then put down your clapping. There, you'll either follow the rules or I'll ask you to leave. Dave Damon?
My name is Dave Damon. I live at 9739 North Vista Drive. I am for the proposed boundary change that would affect the formation of the new fire district. Due to the dispatch protocol and procedures that are in place now, the length of time to respond to a fire district is my concern. I would appreciate your support of the proposed new fire district that would serve the Valley Vista, Truxton, Hackberry area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Marilyn Fuller?
Hi, my name's Marilyn Fuller, and I would like to keep the existing fire department. I would like to see us all maybe help to make it better and improve it. These people that want to have a new one, I think maybe they can volunteer to help the fire department that's existing. And that's all I have. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, ma'am. Rose Ivatt?
My name is Rose Marie Irit, and I own two properties in Valley Vista. And I'm here because I'm very against the boundary change for two simple reasons. Number one, they cannot fulfill this boundary change financially because they have not been able to put anything in writing. They talk a lot about what they have, but we want to see something in writing. Number two, I fear for all of the welfare of my husband and I, our seniors in the community, and we worry about and care for the welfare of our community. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, ma'am. Bruce Ivatt?
My name is Bruce Irit. I reside in Valley Vista. Been there about a year. I love my community. However, I am not for redistricting. I think that, I don't think that they're going to be adequately funded. I think they'll be chaotic. And that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Kim Gaines? Kim Gaines?
Good afternoon, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Kim Gaines. I've lived in Valley Vista for 23 years. I've done about all the volunteering except being on the board out there. I do have a question to ask the board. I don't know if you'll answer me. If the Valley Vista Fire District gets approved and it fails in two years, what happens to us? Do we go back to the Northern? Does the Mojave County take us over, or does the state take us over? Do I have any answer for that?
Sir, I don't know if the attorney can answer, but I believe...
I'm sorry, sir?
Maybe the attorney can answer. Mr. Esplin?
Well, I'm against this redistricting mainly because financially it just doesn't prove itself out for us at this time. I would like to see the Northern Fire Department have the volunteers and their firemen be a little bit more community-oriented for Valley Vista. It would be also nice if they learned where the streets are and how to get around Valley Vista. And if they would send out the same firemen day in and day out or week by week, they would learn the community. And I think this would be a help to all the community people that have had problems with not getting to fires or helping people, as well as the ones that haven't had that problem. And if we could work together, both Valley Vista and Kingman, I think we can work out a really good fire department and possibly continue on in opening up more of our fire stations. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wished to address the board on this item? Come forward, please. State your name and address, sir.
My name is Jody Self, 7262 Superstition Drive out of Valley Vista. I oppose any kind of district or boundary changes. Again, bringing up the budget, if this fails, the chances you're taking are the safety of residents out in Valley Vista. So I urge you to vote no on that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Please come forward if you want to address the board. Come on forward.
Good morning, gentlemen and ladies. My name's Wayne Gason. I live at 7537 East Mesa Vista Drive, and I've lived there for now for seven years with my beautiful wife. And I've sat here today listening to all this bickering amongst these people that is splitting this community apart. And it started three and a half or four years ago with a clandestine meeting at one of the gentleman on this side of the room's house, where about 10 or 12 people were invited. Four of us said we didn't want to do what they were proposing. We never got asked to another one of their home meetings. That's how that's been run since then. But the one thing I have a problem with is the cost of all this. They say they want to open three people station in three locations, Valley Vista, Valentine, and Truxton, or whatever it is. To do that with volunteers on their own under Arizona law is not legal. They have to have paid employees there for insurance purposes alone. Now, to do that in Valley Vista, a crew of four, a crew of four crews with one paramedic going by the 16th FDA meeting, it's $100,000 a year for one person. So that's $400,000 for the four crews you have on that any particular time. Plus, they're going to put in, what should I say? They may already be putting, but they're going to put in a fire chief. There's another $100,000 a year. Their budget under their own thing is only $420-something thousand a year. Now, on top of that, they've already blown it. They haven't taken in any costs in that. That's just wages. No insurance, no nothing. Nothing is going to change in Valley Vista because the ambulance still has to come from Kingman, and you still only got the two medical guys that are going to be going out. To top that off, you open up the other two fire stations that are going to cost $400,000 for staff, minimum. They're already nearly a million dollars in the red before they start. This, I'm sorry, we all agree that the setup we have out there is not good. And to be quite honest, it's up to all of us to get together and make sure that the fire department and you guys get on your, you guys' backs to make sure the fire department do the right thing. Because we don't pay a lot of taxpayers' money into it, but the thing is, we still pay into it. And we should be entitled to the same care out there in Valley Vista that anybody else is in this city of Kingman. And it's not happening, and it's not right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The lady that wanted to speak, ma'am, come forward.
Joan Stevie, and I live in Valley Vista, and I actually have three properties in Valley Vista. And I just wanted on the record, because I did sign up to speak, I am for the proposed boundary changes and formation of the new fire district. NAFED's feasibility study did show that they have no ability or intention of reopening the three fire stations in Valley Vista, Hackberry, and Truxton. So services have been greatly reduced, which is really a threat, if you've heard to public health and public safety. This is not a love fest about NAFED. We have really appreciated the services they have been able to provide. So this has nothing to do with that, but it... So this has nothing to do with that, but when it comes to wanting to annex from NAFED. But it has everything to do with public safety, and that is what we're asking for. So we do wish that you would look at going forward, maybe with the process of petitions, and that is a way of moving forward on this. But we would appreciate your support in looking at the boundary changes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Gentlemen, there's a file with some photographs loaded up on there, if you want to show them. You're going to click through them? Okay, great. My name is Roy Forbes. I've lived in Valley Vista for 23 years. I hope this one event will sum up some of the concerns that there needs to be a change in Valley Vista. On the morning of September 10th, a large Class ARV, while driving down Concho, caught fire at about 8:15 in the morning. After speaking with several residents of the houses close to the fire, and I'm going to refer to them as exposures one and one A, they stated it took between 12 and 14 minutes for the first Dew engine to arrive on the scene about a half mile north of the station. For this example, I'll assume that due to the large amount of smoke that was reaching to the firehouse and flames dancing 30 feet in the air when the crew pulled out, they instantly notified dispatch of a large working fire, which I assume prompted the response from a battalion chief from the Northern Avenue Station. I arrived on the scene about five minutes after the first Dew engine, observed and photographed. The nozzle had been applying a water stream periodically for about five seconds, then observing for another 30, and so on. I do understand this procedure, as this engine only holds 500 gallons, which gives him approximately five minutes of steady water. Now, on a good day, the drive from Northern would take about 20 minutes, and the battalion chief did arrive in his pickup truck about five minutes after me. He continued to the firehouse, picked up the large 3,000 gallon tanker, which luckily was there, because sometimes it's not, brought that to the scene. Now, at this point, without seeing the dispatch logs, I can only assume that that tanker arrived 30 minutes after the initial call, maybe as much as 40. Now, think for a moment, if that had been a house fire, the first Dew engine arrives on scene with fire blowing out the windows, you got two guys on the crew. One guy gets on the nozzle, one guy's supposed to be on the truck, but somebody comes out and starts yelling, "I got somebody in the house! I don't know where they are!" So now you got one guy on the nozzle, one guy conducting a search. I don't even know if that's legal. Oh, and did I mention that the tanker only had one person on board? So eventually, the tanker, the tanker comes up to the fire, they hook the tanker up, or at least they get the deck gun in place, and they launch the stream of water up in the air for about 45, at a 45-degree angle. The problem is, there's not enough people here. If that had been a house fire, it would have been burned to the ground, and you cannot have one guy on the engine, one guy on a stream, or one guy conducting a primary search, and one guy on the stream. It just doesn't happen. That puts everybody in danger. The people in the house, the fire crew, and you're still 20, 25, maybe 30 minutes for a second Dew engine. I really suggest at this point that something changes, whether Valley Vista takes it over, whether they allow volunteers to, at least in this case, a volunteer would have been able to bring the tanker on scene and have that large water supply there if the tanker wasn't Valley Vista. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Arthur Garnika. I live in the city of Kingman. We got bad fire service as it is, and the Valley Vista really needs to get their own thing going, because I've been fighting with this board for a while now. They said we didn't need water trucks. Now they're trying to sell the water trucks again. They wanted to sell the fire stations at the meeting that I was at. They had someone come in and evaluate how it was working out, and they're saying that like Kingman's getting paid like using $500,000 in services, and NAFED's only giving them like $100,000 or more for the service. So I don't think the city of Kingman is going to be on much longer. They're going to probably most likely pull out because they're doing $500,000 worth of work for $100,000. That'll make no sense. They're losing money. And these people don't understand that. It's not the firefighters, all the firefighters, it's the board. It's the board that, and the fire chief right now, that is tearing this department apart. You know, it's too late now. It's going to go on eventually. You guys have to take over. I just want, you know, let the people in Valley Vista know that they need to open their own station and get their own things going before these guys sell off all the trucks, like they're saying, and sell off the stations. I don't know if you can do that legally, but that's what the guy said. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Steve Klein. I live in Arizona West. Excuse me. Just shy of Val Vista. I just want to tell you about an incident that happened a few months ago. There was a house fire. I live on Bridlebit Avenue, just down from the Mike Saloon, as you would call it. 10 o'clock at night, approximately, was woken up by somebody screaming "Fire!" I live two doors down from where the fire was occurring, okay? Now, as I went outside to go over to the next door neighbors, I was 15 feet from the fire. The front of the house, it was a mobile home. The front of the mobile home was already engulfed. You could hear Val Vista Fire Department on their way, coming up Concho to Route 66, and then they have to come down to Buckboard, which is right next to Mike's Saloon. As they arrived, it seemed like maybe 15 minutes, there were two people in the house, okay, at the time. They turned the corner and sat at the saloon. Two or three minutes, easy. You could finally hear Kingman arriving, which was, now we're talking, oh, a good 20 minutes. The two people in the house perished. And what happened as Mojave, as Val Vista Fire Department was coming down, finally, they turned and started slowly going down to the fire. They could see the fire. You could see the fire. Easy. And response time was lousy. That's all I got to say. Don't, don't, you know, it needs improvement, definitely, Val Vista's response time. Those two people perished. I don't know if that was the cause, but in my opinion, it was ablaze, let me tell you. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Ray Richardy. I live in Vala Vista. Been a resident property owner for 30 years. You just heard a devastating statement about response time. That response time, that station was three miles away. The call was made in a timely manner. The fellow who came up and woke up the neighborhood and told everybody to get up, there's a fire. He's the one that made that call. He called at least five minutes before Steve Klein got outside. The man who just spoke witnessed exactly what took place. The fire engine, they came from Kingman because they have to have four to fight an interior fire. Came from Butler. Butler to Vala Vista, there's no secret, 18 miles. 18 miles. That house had already been on fire. Half hour had passed. They're out there waiting for that other fire engine to arrive. By the time they got there, you have to have, under OSHA call, OSHA statutes, for the safety of the firefighters on an interior fire, you have to have four firemen to fight that fire, two inside and two outside. That protocol is standard without, within the United States. The pamphlet that NAFED circulates says that Vala Vista will have two firemen on staff. That's what we have, for the protection of over 1,000 homes in the greater Vala Vista The other night at the town hall, NAFD called to the public last Thursday. Chief Rhodes stated that the Vala Vista Department financially is a quarter of a million dollars upside down. We don't know where those figures came from. We have no idea what is in those figures. But his statement was obviously to tell us that we could not afford having our own station. If that's the case, and it's all about money, which obviously has to be, because Antares, Truxton, and Valentine, fully equipped stations are closed. There's no way anybody is going to open those under NAFD regulations. Is that our fate? Is that what's going to happen in Vala Vista because they can't afford to keep us? Or are you going to let us go ahead and go to petition and see what our destiny really is? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Chairman, I already spoke once, but I want to see if you can give me a minute to announce some of the speculations of what happened with the fire, because I personally talked to the neighbor on the, one, the fire that happened on the house that they keep talking about. That was a murder-suicide going on right now, and it's under investigation. Those people, from what I understand from the neighbor, she has the dog, people from Mike's outpost got to that fire first and waited. They did respond within 15 minutes. They were there within 20 minutes. It was pretty much, the house was barricaded to where people couldn't get in. There was rounds of ammunition going off, so they did have to step back. I don't know why these people can keep tearing this family down. The owner, the guy, had four gunshots in his chest, one in the head. The wife had multiple gunshots as well. Didn't matter what time they got there, these people were dead. It's under investigation. So it's unfair to blame you guys for inadequate fire times of what they keep saying, what they keep doing. I had a motorcycle in front of my, Mike's outpost the other day, three weeks ago, I'm sorry. He ran in front of a car on his bike, got hit, was dead. But within 15 minutes, our fire station got there and was pumping his chest till Kingman came. Ambulance was there within 30 minutes. My staff was outside, can witness this, because they ran out as soon as they heard the boom, they heard the accident, they were on the scene, they were directing traffic in cars. This has to be a no. Why? They keep lying about how fast you guys get there. They keep scaring these seniors of how fast you guys do your job. You can't fear mongrel people into going your way. The truth stands, you guys have not done anything wrong, you've saved plenty of lives. I've heard people tell me behind the cattle guard that you guys have gone past there. You have saved lives. So it's untrue. And if you guys allow this to happen, and the lies and the deceit of what's going on on timeframe to make you guys look bad, it's horrible. And if they don't fulfill the times, if you guys, being as big as you are, can't do it, how are they going to do it? How are they going to fully staff and have people at the realm ready to go and put out all these fires, carry at, volunteers 70, 80 years old, are going to get a 400-pound man out of a house? It's ridiculous. Don't allow this to happen. We need our trained, certified guys that you guys hire, that you guys fingerprint, that you make sure that they can do their job, that you make sure they get physical trained. That's what we need, folks. And I'm praying that you guys do the right thing and don't leave us in the hands of what if? What if we can do it? What if we can't do it? Maybe we have the money. But if they don't have the money and they fail us, who are we as residents to go after? For all their promises and all their false hopes that they're telling all these seniors and getting everybody on board and lying about you guys' times, how you guys kill people, all this stuff with your inadequate getting there in time? So please, understand, if they fail us, we are goners.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Public hearing, much the pleasure of the board.
Supervisor Johnson, I have a question, and it goes, I think, to what that last gentleman was saying, because he was talking to us like we're the elected board. NAFC has an elected board. Have you guys gone and talked to them about all these problems?
Yes, we have.
Because we're not it.
Yeah.
And is there any movement to solve some of these problems internally?
Supervisor Lingan Felder.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Just to build off of Supervisor Angus's comments, both sides of the room, you know, I'm hearing, we're hearing resources, we're hearing response times, and both of those together are, they combine for a level of service. So along the same lines, this is a separate taxing district from Mojave County government. This is a secondary property tax district. There's separate district boundaries, and it has its own board, I believe, five board members, that the residents of the district elect. I think that in 2022, next year, there are three board seats open. So why, and all you need is a majority to push down changes from your fire chief through the staff, right? So if you're not getting the level of service and the level of response times that you want as residents within that district, why not get people to run for fire district board? For the NAFED fire district board, that's way easier than creating a whole different district, getting five new members that are going to be on that board, facilities, equipment, staff. I'm not taking a position one way or the other, because I don't live in the district, but I'm saying that the easier route for everybody to get to a level of service and resources is to get a majority of people on that fair, on that fire district board to push the changes down to the chief. And I, I see the NAFED president, I'm not, I'm not sure if the fire chief's here from NAFED, or if the board president is here, but, you know, for District One, I'd like to, I was on the Kingman City Council as vice mayor when we approved an IGA between the city of Kingman and NAFED to do a sharing of a fire chief. And I'd like to meet with you and Chief Rhodes to hear about some of these resources using these response time issues that have happened since that time, since that was approved. Because I remember sitting on the dais at the city of Kingman as the vice mayor and hearing that, that that was going to really help to professionalize things, to streamline things, to make things better for the residents. And I've heard a lot of things today that maybe are contrary to that, and I don't know why, but I'd like to meet with you and understand that. I do have a question for Ryan Esplin. Somebody raised the question, if that district is formed and they fail for whatever reason, what happens to the residents within that new district?
So Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Lingan Felder, that's a great question. I think really you have to look from history to see what has happened in the past, and I think the board is very well of the history with, what's the name of that rant? What's the name? I'm sorry, what?
Mojave Ranchos.
Yeah, Mojave Ranchos. I think that's really what would happen, is if you've got a situation where it fails, for lack of a better word, then you would have to see if the board would be willing to appoint an administrator to get it back up to snuff or not, or there could be a dissolution, it could dissolve. So I think that you're just looking at histories, what could potentially happen.
History would repeat itself.
Yeah.
The same process that were used, right?
Exactly. So that, I mean, that's, that's obviously the concern, that that could happen. And just a reminder, you know, the decision today is to, whether to accept the district impact statement, approve the district impact statement, or deny it. If you approve it, then they will, then you will authorize the circulation of signatures for a year. If you deny it, then it ends here.
Only one supervisor, obviously, but I am not 100% comfortable with making the determination before we see what the NAFED board does with the district boundary lines. Is it possible to postpone this? I mean, if they meet in the evening on the 4th, then, again, if we postpone it to the 4th, we would make our decision before they made their decision. So is there anything that's detrimental to the whole process if we were to postpone it to the second meeting of October? At that point, we would know what the NAFED board decides on the district boundary change. And the reason I ask that is because, you know, even though it's a separate taxing district, separate board... separate board, if we have the opportunity to eliminate any possibility of some future lawsuit between community members out there, because it's been gut-wrenching for me to listen to and probably for everybody to hear what this issue's done to the community, then that's probably a good thing.
Supervisor Linganfelder, I share your concerns. I'm concerned if the board votes today in favor of it, but then we don't know what happens with Northern Arizona Fire District, and they say no, then there is serious concerns about going forward with the process of the creation. So to answer your question, many times, we will have public hearings in the planning and zoning context, as well as ordinance creation, where we'll have a public hearing, and then the board will say, you know, we need some more information, we need to consider something else, so let's continue this to another date. So, I believe you can do the same by analogy. If you feel like you need more information, or you feel like you need to wait till Northern Arizona makes a decision, then continue this until after that hearing, similar to what we do in the planning and zoning context or the ordinance creation context. So, yes.
I don't think that it would be, it would hurt the process one way or the other. So, I would make a motion, if there are no other comments, that we postpone this issue to the second meeting in October, so we find out what NACFed does.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Supervisor Goode?
No, I was just queuing up to vote.
Oh, okay. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
No.
No. Motion carries. We'll take a five-minute break.
Thirty-six and thirty-seven, they weren't listed on the consent, so I didn't call them, so they were on the consent. So I have a motion to approve items thirty-six and thirty-seven.
Motion second.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we'll go to forty-three, acknowledge receipt of notice of public hearing, Northern Arizona Fire District. Does anybody need the, oh, Ryan?
Yeah, so this is, this is required by statute. The, once the, once the Fire District receives a petition to modify the boundaries, they have to notify the board and then the chairman has to order a review. We already know what the issues are, we already know what's going on. If you wish, we can, you can send them a letter within ten days, but but really, it's just authorize the chairman to order the review and be done with it. And the review's already done. It's, we already know what's going on. But we want to make sure we're following the law, so we'd ask, I'm asking the board to approve this. And I'm, if you want, I can notify the, I can notify Northern Arizona Fire District's attorney of what we've done today. I know that she was watching the proceedings, or she told me she was going to watch the proceedings, so she probably already knows, but I can still reach out to her.
All right, any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Chairman Johnson, motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign. Motion carries. Item thirty-nine, Supervisor Lingefelter.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. This issue, it has to do with the Mojave, Mojave County's ongoing fights against the hedge fund GSC Farms proposing to transfer Colorado River Water for really the first time east, one hundred and seventy miles, to the town of Queen Creek, so that they can build another fifty-five hundred homes. At this point in time, they, GSC Farms has gotten the green light from the Arizona Department of Water Resources. It now goes to the Federal Bureau of Reclamation, Department of Interior, who they have stated they're going to be doing an environmental assessment. These are Mojave County's comments to that process due by September twenty-fourth, really urging the Department of Interior and Bureau of Reclamation to do a full-blown environmental impact statement. With that, I would recommend approval by the Board of Supervisors to send a NEPA scoping comment letter to the Bureau of Reclamation by September twenty-fourth, 2021, in the environmental assessment by USBR of the proposed Greenstone Hedge Fund water transfer to the town of Queen Creek, and to authorize Chairman Johnson and Supervisor Lingefelter to make technical and legal changes consistent with the board's intent to draft the letter contained in today's agenda packet in their discretion as they deem necessary.
Second.
For the discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign. Motion carries. Item forty, Supervisor Angus.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. The next two items are just the next part of the dissemination of the ARPA funds in my district, and both of them are for Davis Camp. The first one is a waterline project that needs to be done, and I'm glad that we're going to be addressing some of these issues that have been plaguing Davis Camp for many years. So with that, I make a motion to approve item forty.
Second.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign. Motion carries. Item forty-one, Supervisor Angus, do you have a motion?
Same deal. This is for repair, maintenance, and renovation projects in Davis Camp, and I believe you're going to bring forward that list of priority items, so the board can see what we're going to be doing, correct? Okay, so with that, I make a motion to approve item forty-one.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign. Motion carries. Item forty-two is an update to that Mojave County Fairgrounds. I'm not sure why we have people signed up for it, but I'll call them. Jerry Maguire.
Mr. Chairman, just really quick, I wanted to let you know that Byron will be providing an update, a brief update to the board. About a month ago, when the board was reviewing and considering the decision related to the lease, we had sure, shared with the board at that time that there were some immediate improvements that were needed related to health and safety hazards, regardless of who was responsible for the fair and was in charge. So to that end, we worked with the Mojave County Fair Association and addressed some electrical hazards that were needed to be done, with the understanding that there would, the county would be reimbursed for those at the time when we reconciled. And so that was done. Byron is prepared to brief the board on that, so you're aware of what we've done, and we can be fully transparent. And so when you're ready, Byron will provide that. Thank you.
Always look forward to Byron's. Mr. Maguire.
Thank you, Jerry Maguire, Mojave County Fair Association. Thank you, Chairman, Supervisors, County Attorney, County Manager, and all your staff. We possibly just finished the largest Mojave County Fair yet. I do not have any hard numbers. Of course, we shut down last night about eight. I make this, this claim in terms of attendance, economic impact, and quality of life enhancement to our county. I think we owe you all a big thank you for your help and support on, on having this event. I'm just here available for any questions or comments you might have. I do not have hard data at this time. I can generalize or speculate if you wish, but I just want to let you know I was available.
Thank you, sir. Connie Joy, are you still here, ma'am? I place this on the agenda. My question was, we've got people out there working on this fairgrounds. I don't recall us authorizing any money to do this. I don't know. Yes, sir?
Chairman Johnson, Supervisors. As you know, we've ran multiple inspections out there at fairgrounds. We've been doing it for a number of years, and we actually did several ones earlier this year, and identified a number of problems, particularly safety-related problems that needed to be addressed. Every time we did an inspection in the past, we provided that information and prioritized our, our findings that, as to what needs to be fixed immediately, and what is high priority, what is medium priority. Provided that to the fairgrounds manager, and then did follow-ups on that to see what was done. In most cases, they'd addressed the immediate safety issues, but there was a lot of issues that were even in the high and medium-range priority that, that were not done. A few weeks ago, after you all had decided on the transition to, for the county to take over the fairgrounds, we implemented a more intensive effort to go out there and, and look at exactly what were the immediate safety hazards that could impact the fair itself, and the other events that have been going on, the livestock show before the fair, and some of the other events that are upcoming. And we identified particularly a lot of electrical problems, and this was something that was, that County, Mojave County Facilities worked extensively on, John meeting, and he actually got our contractor, electrical contractor that we use for a lot of our electrical issues out there, to look at the potential problems. And it was decided that we were going to address the immediate safety hazards, the safety hazards that we knew were, were safety hazards that, that could be an issue. And as I say, as I said earlier, most of those did involve electrical issues. And there were about, actually, in the, the exhibit halls themselves, there were also issues with lighting, because a lot of the fluorescent lights were out, or, and there were electrical issues with those, as well as the lighting issues. So we ended up with the electrical contractor replacing, I think, about forty-three fluorescent units inside the exhibit halls, also replaced some, some lighting outside and some lighting on the emergency exits, and also addressed some of the potential electrical hazards. There were a lot of electrical hazards out in the livestock area and in the livestock arena, where they auction off the animals. That entire system, which was kind of an overhead-type system there in the arena, was in bad shape with bare wires. A lot of the conduit was broken, some of the conductors were broken. The system was, essentially, a lot of the switches needed to be replaced on that. So that was essentially totally replaced. Out in the livestock arena, or, excuse me, not the arena, but the sheds themselves, there were a lot of electrical issues as well that needed to be addressed, particularly with bare wires. Some of the individuals that were working out there as part of the, the process were actually receiving a few shocks when they were trying to, to fix some of this stuff. And they ended up finning, finishing up well before the fair started, and replacing all of the things that we felt might be a hazard to life safety and also for a fire hazard. Spent about ten thousand six hundred and ninety dollars for the contractor to go out there and fix those issues. And by no means did they fix everything. As you're aware, this is an old facility. The wiring was put in, I don't know how many years ago, thirty, forty years, maybe longer. So a lot of the stuff out there is not up to code. We think that the wiring inside of the livestock sheds that is apparently buried underground is probably, probably doesn't have a conduit, it's probably bare wire. Probably, all this stuff needs to be brought up to speed, but we elected to, besides, for time purposes and also for expenditure, limiting our expenditure, we only addressed those issues that were an immediate known hazard that we felt could, could cause an issue. And that included, like I said, the danger of electrical shock, as well as the areas in, in the exhibit halls and in the livestock sheds where the lighting was poor and could create a hazard from, because of poor lighting. So that's essentially where we're at with regard to that. There's a lot more work that needs to be done, and we'll have to wait until the county takes over. There were a couple of other hazards that were identified. One was the, there was a small shed out there that had a fire in it earlier this year, and that needs, needs to be barricaded off. I think maybe the fairgrounds was in the process of doing that. But that needs to be fixed or torn down. And the trailer that is used as the office out in front, after a thorough review by facilities and risk management, it was determined that it is, it needs to be removed, it needs to be demolished and, or moved out of there because it's, it's a hazard and cannot be fixed. It has some issues with the porch where the roof is, is potentially caving in also, and potentially roof is, ceiling tiles are falling in inside of it, and the, the structure itself is not in good shape. So that's another item that needs to be taken care of as soon as possible. And whether that's before the county transitions over the management of it or afterwards is, remains to be seen. But we felt like the expenditures had to be, had to take place in order to create a safe environment for the fair. And we realized that in working with the, the Fair Association, they were, they were really stretched thin in trying to manage the fair, and I think they, they did a really good job in managing the fair. But we felt like we had to step in on the safety issues and take care of those.
Well, I guess, my question is, it was a nice, long dissertation you gave us, Senator Stewart. We've had those same complaints and those same evaluations of the fairgrounds forever. I mean, you can go back years. I guess where I, our last meeting where we discussed the fairgrounds and the, we reconsidered the taking over and we agreed with the, and the fairgrounds agreed that we would take it over in December thirty-first or January first of this year or next year. Do we, do we have a contract in front of us? Did somebody sign a contract that said, "We're going to now jump into a piece of property that we just said we were going to let them continue to run for another three months"? Do we have a contract with them that says they're going to replay, replay, pay us back this money?
We do have an option in the contract that if we repair items that need to be repaired, and they, they could not get to it, then we can actually go back and rebuild them for that. And when, we'd had this discussion with, with County Manager Elters, and we talked about that, and also with facilities, that we would look at, at that option after the fact, as to whether we were going to try to rebuild them back, or just go ahead and, and take care of the cost ourselves. But in this particular case, it was a safety issue, a hazard that we felt needed to be addressed. Some of the issues, as I said, have been ongoing for a couple of years, that we've, we've notified them of. And others are things that when we got to looking at it in depth, particularly when we had the electrical contractor out there, they found a lot more stuff than what you, we could just identify on a walkthrough inspection. And we felt like, since we identified a known hazard, not only was it a safety hazard, but it was a liability hazard for the county if we didn't go ahead and fix it. So we made the decision to go ahead and, and, and fix it and spend that money, and then decide how we were going to deal with the, who was going to pay for it after the fact.
Now, are we, are we billing for, were we billing for county staff time too, or are we just billing for the electrician?
Well, we haven't made that decision yet. The dollar amount I gave you was just for our electrical contractor, was with the ten thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. So we did have staff time with some of our staff that was out there doing the inspections and, and watching the process and observing and supervising the operation.
Right, I guess, because what concerns me is, we have County Manager, who every meeting talks about being a hundred employees down, and now we're taking our people to go over and run another facility who, you know, basically, they, they're in control of that facility. We're not in control of it. I, I didn't know that we were going to be expending funds over there, whether we can get them back from the contract or not, and I guess, that's going to be interesting if they couldn't replace fluorescent lights before. And then I thought the last meeting, or the meeting we ever talked about, the Fire Board, that they were getting a hundred and some thousand dollars. I mean, we can't tell them how to spend that money. I guess that was, I just wanted to bring it up because, because I'd heard about that, to the board's attention, that we're doing work on something that, in my opinion, we have no business spending.
One thing.
... money on.
Mr. Chairman.
One thing that I could add on that is that we, the things that we fixed, and we had this discussion before we fixed them, are things that if they weren't fixed now, we would have to fix them after we, we took over in transition in order for a safety issue. So we felt like since it was going to have to be an expenditure one way or another, after, whether we do it now or after we take it over, it would be better to do it before the fair and the other things that are going out on there in order to mitigate a potential safety hazard.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Yeah, I tend to agree with you. First, we were going to take it over immediately, then we postponed it to the end of the year. I, I guess I just would have really, I'd like to have seen some sort of a memorandum of understanding that if any assistance was required to do some safety upgrades, that would have been brought to the board before any money went out. I don't know who made the decision to, to do that, but I absolutely think we need to be billing, if we're going to be doing more, for our staff time too.
Mr. Chairman, board members, I authorized those expenses. I did so with the following understanding. The lease has language in it that allows for reconciliation and for us to be reimbursed. Second, these were repairs that were an absolute must. Somebody could hit, could get hurt in the process with exposed electrical wiring. What you heard is there are far, far more repair to be done than what was done. These were an, these were hazards that truly could hurt someone. So, and by the time that was recognized, it was after the board had reconsidered the termination of the lease, and it was too late to bring it before the board prior to the fair, which was this weekend. So the decision that I made, and I take full responsibility for it, was to authorize it, knowing that it was minimal, it's under eleven thousand dollars, and that I did make contact with the Fair Association to have a discussion that we are proceeding with those repairs with the understanding that we expect to be reimbursed for them. So the decision was mine, and I take responsibility for it.
Yeah, I think, at, at least from my point of view, we knew about all these problems with the fairground. We've had numerous reports of the same thing that Mr. Stewart said he fixed. And while we can say we just now went out there and looked at it again, I believe that this is a unique situation. We have a person who is, or an organization who leases from us a piece of our property. And I don't think it's our business to be going in there and fixing those things up or telling them how to run that business. We have an agreement with. I just think that, I think we need to be careful in the future because without authorization from the board to be spending county funds, we can get ourselves in trouble. Our staff can get themselves in trouble for, for expending the money without proper authorization because we still have no budget for a fairground. I guess the attorneys could, could argue out the legal issues on us going in and fixing up something that someone has a lease on. But that's all I just wanted to bring to the board. Anybody else have any questions? I didn't want any action on this. I already did that one. We covered everything, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to go home?
Yep.
You're there.
Did you say go home?
To go.
Yeah.
Sure.